Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome into the Rooted in Progress Stream Center. We are back, baby.
There we go. Yes.
Sounds like we've been missing. Well, you were missing.
I know, man.
Somebody had last week off.
Yes, yes. Well, duty calls. So unfortunately, I had to miss out. Did you miss me?
Not you gave yourself your own applause.
Of course, we missed you, Terrence.
Yeah, I missed you guys, man. And I know you guys had some pretty good topics, man. I really wanted to weigh in on the Malcolm Jamal Warner incident, which, which the whole Cosby show back in the eighties, even today, now that I have kids, I even used some of those Cosby episodes as a guidance to raise my kids. So for that to happen to him, that was a, that was a tough loss for, for our community. So.
Well, we're happy to have you back on Rooted in Progress, my favorite co-host.
Oh, there we go. I'm tired. I got some love. It took us only eighteen months.
It is not eighteen months. Thank y'all for joining us this morning. And if you're listening to this a little bit later, we appreciate you. This begins our series, our candidate conversations series. We're so excited about this. The entire Rooted in Progress team has been working really hard to schedule and coordinate with all of the candidates who are running for the Tampa City Council District Five seat. So for all of you who are unaware, and just as a reminder, Gwendolyn Henderson, who was a city councilwoman who sat on city council for the city of Tampa, unfortunately passed away. And so ultimately, there's an empty seat up for grabs right now advocating for and representing District Five, which is the only majority minority district in the city of Tampa. This seat is huge. It's huge. It's critical. So what we're going to do for the next several weeks up until election day, we are going to have all of the candidates in on Rooted in Progress. You are able to tune in. If you are live right now, make sure you ask questions. And we are going to do our best to ask all of the questions so that you all get to know, so that you all are informed voters. Cause you know what I hate to hear, Terrence? People be like, why? I don't even know who to vote for.
Well, exactly. And if you're not tuned in to your local news stations, radio stations, Rooted in Progress, then shame on you because you wouldn't have to ask that question. You would know what candidates are running and who to vote for.
So we're gonna start things off with our first candidate. So we are so appreciative of having her come in. She is not new to Rooted in Progress. So shout out to an OG returning back, Ms. Joanna Colbert.
Good morning. I'm coming back to my roots. Yes, Rooted in Progress.
You've been rooted. You've been rooted.
She's not new to Rooted in Progress, but she is new to our studio. So we just want to welcome you back as well as welcome you in person.
Do I get the fake hand clap?
We just gave it. I give it again. You deserve a second round. That's another standing ovation. There we go.
Thank you. We're so honored to have you. You are such a multifaceted person. You have been involved in this community, indebted in this community for a while now. We just want to start off by people getting to know who you are. So tell us your background, where you're from, when you moved to Tampa, and a little bit about your upbringing.
I appreciate you giving me the opportunity and thank you for even allowing me to be on here and having these conversations. I love this setup. We have a lot of candidate forums coming up, but I think this kind of gives me an opportunity and the other candidates to really talk one-on-one, to get to know them a little bit more. Because when you're doing candidate forums, you know, you typically have like thirty seconds to respond. I'm like, oh, okay, I'm done.
Oh, you got fifty minutes here, baby. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, I'm gonna start a little bit about me. I was born in Los Angeles, California. So I'm really a West Coast girl. Yeah, I'm a Valley girl a little bit, a little bit. But when my parents divorced, I moved to Youngstown, Ohio, where my mother is from, and graduated high school there, then decided, you know, I wanted to be on my own. Number one, I graduated with a child in my hand. Yeah, so I was seventeen when I had my son. So I was a very young mother. Now I think it's great that I did that. So I can do things like this. I don't have to worry about balancing family and kids because I know it's hard to do that, right? But that's a little bit of my background. We'll get to that. So I moved to Indianapolis, Indiana and lived there for seven years. My, my first job was in economic development. That's what I've done my whole career until I started doing real estate full-time. And for those who may not know what economic development is, it's basically working for a community and helping to bring higher paying jobs to the area, helping to bring capital investment for your community to grow smart, to have your community to thrive. That is what economic development is. And presenting to city council, because of course, when companies come to an area, they're investing in the community. So they want the community to invest in them. So sometimes they ask for tax incentives. Sometimes they ask for tax abatements, things to help offset their costs. And so it's a public-private partnership. And that typically is what economic development is and how a community gets to the next level. No one can do it alone. So that's a little bit. Economic development is my background. Then I moved to Charlotte, North Carolina.
Oh, I love Charlotte.
Charlotte is a queen. They call it the Queen City. And their downtown is called Uptown. Yes, yes. So it's uptown. So I lived there for about seven years doing economic development there. And then I got recruited to move to Houston to do economic development there. I lived in Houston for about three years. And then I'm not gonna even talk about, we're not gonna get too deep into this, but you know, you move, you move for love. And so.
Brave God.
Yes, yes. And we're not talking love for the city either, right?
No, this is, no, you can love your city, but I'm talking about the other love.
So yeah, so I moved to Fayetteville, North Carolina, again, did economic development there. And it's so, that's why it's never good to burn bridges. You always want to treat people right and do a good job. Because if not, I wouldn't have been able to have the roles and be able to do the things that I have done. If I have burned bridges or been disrespectful to any, you know, you're not gonna always agree, but there's a way to professionally and respectfully do things. And I think that has helped me in life. And I'm proud of that. So economic development, and then I moved to Tampa in two thousand seventeen. That is when I called and made Tampa my home. And I'm happy that I did that. I love everything about Tampa other than the humidity. The humidity.
And you lived in Houston.
Can city council control that? No. Listen, yup. City council could do a whole lot of things, but they can't do, they can't do nothing about that humidity.
You should be used to it, living in Houston.
I know, but I'm telling you, it's different. And then I feel like here in Tampa, it lasts longer. Much longer.
Yeah, that's for sure.
So we have some great things, but the humidity is something I would want to change. We're gonna have to put that on city council.
Well, we're glad you're here. And you know, we wouldn't be here if you hadn't made that move to Tampa. So tell us a little bit about your real estate background and career that's taking off.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I have always had a passion for real estate. My grandfather owned a lot of real estate in, in California. And it's always been in the back of my mind. So when I had the opportunity to get my real estate license, I did so. And I started, I actually started at RE/MAX when I first got my license. I worked at RE/MAX for about, shout out to Kendall Bonner. She's the broker in, at RE/MAX in, in New Tampa area. And about four months after I started there, Sherrell started Allure. And I had met Sherrell probably about a year before that. And she's like, when I, when I start my brokerage, you're gonna come there. I said, absolutely. And that's exactly what I did. And I went to work for Allure. I've only worked for two brokerages in my whole career. And then about a, maybe a year, I don't even think it was a year, that's when we got the opportunity to do Selling Tampa, which I'm super proud of. And I know a lot of people may only recognize me from Selling Tampa, but I have been involved in the community before and after that. And I think just educating people is what I'm really doing over these next several months. It's because I have love for the community. I have invested in the community. I have given back to the community. And Selling Tampa, I'm very proud that we had the opportunities to do that. We've inspired so many people to get their real estate license. So many minority women, black and brown women, just from seeing us on the show has inspired so many people. And I'm proud of that.
Wow, that is beautiful. How do you, and I think because, like you said, people can probably recognize you or associate your name with Selling Tampa or Netflix or reality TV star, whatever, all of those terms, right? But what beauty in that experience do you think can actually propel you to sit on city council?
Number one, I think it's just, that's a good question. I want to see the best way to answer that. I think representing an area, number one, I represented Tampa in that, right? So I, I, that shows the love I have for Tampa. We could decline that. We, we could have said, no, let's not feature. They could have said, no, they didn't want to feature all of us or didn't want us to show who we really were. I, I was very transparent on that show. I was going, I was separated on that show. I cried on that show. And I, I am, they call me HR in the show. So I, we know that I'm about my business and getting things done and finding solutions. But I think that really helped me in terms of being able to understand our community a little bit better and being exposed to some things that I might not have otherwise been exposed to. I think it gave me an opportunity to work with different types of people. When you're doing, going back to economic development, real estate, filming a show, you have to have communication skills. You have to have listening skills. You have to be able to work with anyone, no matter their political association, no matter their nationality, no matter their age, no matter their race, no matter their gender. All of those things in my history and my experience have contributed to where I am today.
Yeah, I think one thing that sticks out to me too, with combining or, you know, relating that experience on Netflix to running for city council is being able to, to, to respond to backlash and respond to people just in general, right? Because when you expose yourself to any and everything, like we do or I do, especially on a daily basis, right? Everybody got this. Everybody got something to say. It's how you react and how you continue to progress and move forward, even when you're faced with those types of situations, which is something that I found so beautiful. Because I mean, there was nothing wild or crazy that happened with Selling Tampa. But even still, there's always gonna be somebody that has something to say. And I love the way that you have always stood your ground. You have always represented who you are in a very eloquent and elegant way. And I, and I think that that is also something that shows the relation between Netflix and running for city council.
That's a good point. Because when the show first came out, they said, do not respond or look at comments. People have opinions. And some people are good with taking it in and not really letting it affect them or, you know, doing an outburst. Some people may get upset. They may respond, respond in a certain manner. But I think, number one, I think having a child really young, also attributed to me being able to maneuver and, and being able to just accept and understand what people say. I may not agree, but I don't have to always comment. I don't have to have an outburst, right? And that's the same with the show. And that's gonna be the same with city council. It's, it's the same with anything in life. Everyone is entitled to their opinion, but you have to control how you respond. And that's how I, and that's how I live my life.
Yeah. And so let's, let's just kind of dive into your plan. What is your plan for the, for the district if you were to win?
That's an interesting question. I, I don't know if I have a, I'm not gonna say I have a plan. I have a platform. I have initiatives that I think we need to move forward, right? So city council, let me first give you a quick education about city council, because a lot of people don't know. I may have all of these ideas in the world, right, that I want to do. But I'm not gonna be able to do anything without three other council people in one accord with me. So I think, three things, when you think of city council, think of the term blow, B L O. I made that up, right? Because it just helps me remember things. B is for the budget. The city, the, the mayor presents the budget, but city council approves the budget. Or they question the budget or say, hey, you have this line item on here, but we think more should be here. So think budget. And then think laws and ordinances. That is what term blow is. And that is what city council can control. I can't, I can't say, oh, we're going to do, I don't, I don't, I'm gonna give an example of something someone may want us to do, but I can't just come out and say, yes, I am going to do that. Because I may not have the power to do that. And that is what city council is. That is what we can control. And the important thing is to get, have a relationship or understanding and a respect with the other council members to move things forward.
Yeah, I, that, for one, I think a lot of people forget that, right? One person being elected to city council does not mean all things change for your particular district, right? You are a representation and an advocate for that specific district, but you all have to work together in order to get things accomplished. Are there certain things and issues within the district that are a part of your platform that you, that you want to resolve?
Yes. Affordable housing is one of them. That is the overriding consensus from different people in different parts of the district in the city. We need more affordable housing. We, we need more diverse housing. We need veteran housing. We need senior housing. We need just, we need, and when I say affordable housing, that's housing for teachers, for police officers, housing where they can afford based on their salary and not have to live an hour and a half out. That is what affordability is. And I think we are, we have a blessing and a curse in Tampa because it's, it's so popular. So many people have moved here. It's very desirable, especially during COVID. So now we're dealing with those side effects because we know when something is demand, in demand, the price goes up. And so that's why we're having a major issue with affordability. Another thing I would definitely say is small business support. We have a lot of small businesses in our, in our area. I am a small business owner. Any, anything under five hundred employees is considered a small business. And so we want to make sure it's easier for people to do business in Tampa. And we want to support those businesses in a manner that we can legally do. If they are investing in our community, then we should be investing in them. And that's something that I'm truly passionate about as well. And then economic development, creating jobs, higher paying jobs for our community. And, and a couple of things about that is because we, we talk a little bit about crime, right? So you can be proactive with crime and reactive. And if you think about the reasons that there are crime, there's a couple of things. People don't have money. So they do things. So if you don't have a job, you're gonna do something to take care of your family, whatever you have to do to take care of them. And then mental health, that also leads to some crime. We need more wraparound services and accessibility to those services for people. We don't know what people are going through. We don't know what happened to them, but we're, I think sometimes we're so judgmental. And then our programming that we have, being able to communicate what those programs are better and bringing in people to, to really take advantage of those programs. So those are some of the things that I have experienced in, and I think is something that is a priority for our communities. Yes, downtown priorities are gonna be a little bit different than Sulfur Springs. Sulfur Springs is gonna be, excuse me, different than Channel Side. Every area in District Five has their own set of, of challenges. But we all have to work together in order to, to meet those, those challenges and figure out how we resolve them.
And that's a good point, too. And speaking of the people, how will you make sure that all the voices, especially the those that are underrepresented, be heard throughout, you know, some of the city decisions? Because we know most, most of your district is, is growing. It's booming.
People forget about, like District Five is such a vast district. It goes from Water Street to like East Tampa, West Tampa, Downtown Tampa. Like it, it, it offers a lot of, the port, all of those areas. So I mean, yeah, Terrence, that, that question is, is very valid.
I think one of the, the main ways, I, I don't know it all, right? You don't know it all. None one person knows it all. But I think being accessible, being out in the community, attending neighborhood meetings, going to community events, hearing from those people who have their ear to the ground in those areas and, and giving them a platform to provide their feedback to you, using social media, using text messages, using emails, using the, you know, the big signs when you, you see outside in the city or county when they're hosting meetings and they want community feedback. But can we make them a little bigger, right? I think I almost crashed trying to look at one. They are small. Yes, yes. But those are the, we have to, we, we have to get to the community. We can't base things on hearing, and number one, we can't base things hearing back from only a few people. Only a few people does not represent the whole district. So we have to figure out a way how to be more inclusive. But I will also tell you, may not be popular opinion, but we have to do our part. Community members can't expect for people to just know what they want or, or, or understand what their needs are if they are not participating and, and voting. Number one, voting, going to city council meetings, going to neighborhood meetings, knowing who your city county, is city council member is and your county commissioner is, being able to email them if you have an issue. I think the onus is on us as well as a people. So I, I think it's, it's everyone's.
I, I hear, I hear affordable housing. I hear supporting small businesses and, and economic development, right? And creating great, more jobs, higher paying jobs. When I think back to blow, right? How do we get that in the budget? How do we create laws and ordinances to actually make those things a part of your platform a reality?
I, number one, I like that you remember the acronym.
I wrote it down. Girl. Hello. Cause I like that. I like that.
Make sure nobody take that. Coin, Joanna coined that.
I love it. I love it.
But I think a couple, well, two things. The mayor just presented the budget about a week and a half ago to city council. And let's remind everyone that there are supposed to be seven city council members on that seat. But there's only.
It was not represented.
It is not represented. But we do have out at-large council members that represent all of the city of Tampa. So let's also remember that, too. But now is the time. They're, they're doing workshops for the budget. If people have input, you should find out when those dates are and participate and let the council members hear from you if you're not happy with what has been, what has been outlined in the budget. The, but, uh, last year, the budget was one point eight billion dollars. This year is two billion. So obviously, costs have gone up. So you want to make sure whatever you are passionate about or wherever you think the challenges are, that those, some funds are being directed to either those organizations, those line items. So now is the time to look at that. Because once it passes, it's it. For you, now, monies can be, if monies is in that line item, they may be able to be increased or moved around a little bit, but the budget is the budget. So city council is really voting on that as of, as of now and wanting to hear back from the community. So that is where, why it's important to be involved. And I think we also have to understand that once it is enacted, accountability. So the city of, the city of Tampa has, I think, close to four thousand employees. So when employees are assigned to do something, it's, and the line item in the budget is there, city council has to ask questions and get updates to see, okay, there's money diverted for roads, but did that road get fixed? So whose job is it to follow up to make sure it's actually getting done? And that is where your city council comes in and somehow working with administration and staff to make sure that there is a good relationship there in order to make sure things are getting done as budgeted.
Yeah. And we, we talked about District Five and the, how, how large it is. And, but there's several different, it makes up of several different communities, all with different characters. What are your plans on protecting the, those characters from developing, you know, and keeping that, those characteristics? Ebor has its own characteristics, of course, the Water Street District, so on and so forth. What are you planning on doing to kind of protect those, those characters of each one of those neighborhoods?
You mean like the, like preserving like history and not overdevelopment?
Yes, absolutely. Without overdevelopment. Yep.
That's tough.
Yeah, it is tough because growth is coming. Development is coming regardless. It's gonna go up above us, around us, on us. It's coming. But I think similar to some of the things that is happening with overlays. So what Ebor does to preserve the look and feel buildings, that is what we need in areas that want to preserve the look and feel. East Tampa wants to preserve the look and feel. That is what we have to have and adhere to. Those are the, the laws and ordinances part of it. Because the, the, the city has a, a long-range plan on what they want in certain areas. And then it's up to us to really execute that. Again, it goes back to laws and ordinances. So if a developer comes to, to city council and say, hey, I want to develop this, but it looks like this, our job is to say, hey, no, it should look like this. Because that is what the community wants. And that's what's gonna preserve the look and feel of that community. And what I would say we should do a little bit more of is working with the developers. They, they want to do what the community wants, but we have to have our ask together. And I didn't say the curse word. I said our ask. Yes, yes. We have to know what we want and don't, developers budget out and they plan for what the rules are, right? We can't change the plans midway and then expect them to be able to adhere to that. And so I think we have to have our act together in terms of the city and then work in conjunction with developers on, this is the need. You know, if you build this here, then we need you to help more with public transportation. We need you to help with this infrastructure because that is going to impact the whole community. So working more, working together with developers, I, I think we can do a little bit better. Do, be a little bit better at.
Yeah, I, I honestly, this is just a little DM on me here. It's so hard for people. Like I, I get both sides of this whole like development argument, right? You have those folks who are like, I don't want anything changed in my neighborhood and blah, blah, blah. But fix the sidewalk. But fix the road. But do this. But don't build the building. I'mma still drive twenty minutes to go to Publix. But I'm okay with that. Like I, I get that side, but then I also get the side of revitalizing and, and adding more resources and making it kind of more up-to-date and more twenty twenty-five-ish or whatever. And I think the, the hard part that I have when it comes to development and revitalization, especially with District Five, is who gets the priority and who sees more money and more impact from the budget? Is it going to Water Street? Or is it going to East Tampa? How do we find a balance where your black, brown, Hispanic communities are suffering, but your majority white community in, in District Five thriving?
Yeah.
Like how, how, how do we work with the developers? How, how do, what do we need to do? What needs to happen with city council? So we can make sure that, that there's some fairness when it comes, when it comes to that.
Most people have a seat at the table.
Yeah. So number one, I think making sure you have the right city council members in the seat. That, that's one way. Then another way is, you made a good point with Water Street and Channel Side. They want, they want it. They, they have their plan together as to what they want and people move in that direction together. I think particularly in East Tampa, you have so many different people who want something. And it may be contradictory to what the other organization or people want. So when you're fighting, you're never getting anything done. And I think we have to be on a better accord within East Tampa. So if we're all working and agree that this is where, where we want to move the needle, there's nothing that's gonna stop it.
Yeah, that's the problem. Nobody wanna do it.
Nobody, yeah.
Yvette Lewis, I think, said it. She, she says a lot of things and we love, love her so bad. Too bad. President of Hillsborough NAACP, and she said it, like, city council, if they want something done, oh, it gets done. Like point blank period. If, if that is the agenda, they get it done. The, the question is, is when do we want something that badly for our minority communities?
Absolutely. And, and I think the time is now. We, we want it now. We don't want to wait until two, three, four, twenty years from now. We want it now. But again, it goes back to that number of votes. So if they, the number of votes are not congruent to that, then it's, not much is gonna happen. Now, there can be certain things that happen that does not require city council, right? But in general, we, we have to come together more. Where our community, our district is so diverse, but we're so divided. And that is what we have to change and address. And we have to have hard conversations with one another. Would this organization wants this? This organization doesn't want to see development, but this one does, right? So who, who is the right, who gets, who gets to, to make the decision? But I think we should figure, figure that out quickly. Or we're gonna continue to be left behind, or they are gonna tell us how they want the, the community to look.
Yeah. And, and again, speaking of looking, you got different looks, different communities, gentrification taking place in, in District Five. What is your, what is your take on public safety? Keeping these neighborhoods safe? Building a trusting relationship between the people and the law enforcement? What, what is your take on that?
Number, number one, based on the numbers that I was looking at, our crime rate has went down. And I think we're, we're going in the right direction. And what I talked about a little bit beforehand, the, the more, the more things we can do proactively, creating jobs, creating community places for our young children and people to go. So they're not getting in, in trouble, right? Making sure that we're funding those nonprofits or supporting those nonprofits that have programs to help support the children. Making sure that we have the budget for mental health services, wraparound services, homeless, homelessness. When we address all of those things, crime is gonna naturally grow down, go, go down. But in terms of law enforcement, we also need more police officers. When you have more of a population, you have to bring on more police officers, unfortunately. But we have to educate our police officers and, and educate our community as well. There's certain things that we shouldn't be doing either. And I'm saying we, because I'm black. I'm saying certain things we have to know that we can and can't do. So it's an educational thing on both sides. So it's an educational thing on both sides, but we don't wanna be a target either just because we're black. And so I think. I think education from uh both sides is what's needed and doing more. Doing more community events where law enforcement is involved and get acclimated with the community. And and with different uh nationalities, Hispanic, black, brown, all of those things. I think that is the way to go.
Absolutely.
I have like four pressing questions I have in my head, but before I get to the main one that I wanna ask you. I do wanna cover, I wanna cover this because I don't think a lot of people know this about you. You served on the Tampa Economic Development Corporation as well as the Pasco Economic Development Council. When we speak to your background and your credibility to even run for this office, cuz I'm gonna keep it, we keep it real here. Your name came up and they're like, what? Like, why? And who and whatever? And and so to hear not only for folks who did not know, the Tampa Economic Development Corporation, the Pasco Economic Development Council. Tell me one, why you felt the need or wanted, not even the need, but why you wanted? And were passionate about joining those those councils and those organizations? And what work did you accomplish while on them?
Okay, so those were my jobs. They weren't, they weren't committees or anything that I volunteered. Those were, that was my job. When I first moved to Tampa, I worked at the Tampa EDC. I was a project manager there and we. I don't have the numbers, I'm not gonna even try to make the numbers up, but we helped so many companies expand and relocate here that. Provided and created higher paying jobs. That's the whole focus of the Tampa EDC. Craig Richard does a great job there. And I I knew him back in Houston and he really understands economic development. And marketing a community as a location for business. So those two organizations that you mentioned, I was an actual employee. And in the Pasco EDC, I was the vice president. So again, my background in. Budgets and public private partnerships and creating jobs, I I have the credentials. That's not even a question, it's just. Do Pete, I don't go around touting that. And if you don't, you don't, what they say, if you don't know, you don't know. And so my goal is to share that information and make sure people understand that I do have that experience. The other things that I've been involved with that is not a part of my job is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I've been on there for a couple, a couple of years. I also have always had an affinity for affordable housing. That is something that's personal to me. I I share with you, I was a a young mother. I used down payment assistance to buy my first home. And so that is something that I wanna preserve in the budget as well because I know. In order for a lot of black and brown people to become homeowners, and not just black and brown, I'm just saying a lot of it. By majority, or it could be white, it could be any nationality. We will never, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to purchase a home if we did not have that. Help in order to pay for down payment assistance. So Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, I was on the East Business Civic Association with Representative Hart, with her organization years ago. I was uh on the Board for Pace Center for Girls. Again, I was a young mother, so that's something I'm passionate about. So that that's where I devoted my time. Uh I was on the the YMCA board. My son utilized the YMCA. He went to the summer programs. That's who taught my son to swim, not me. The YMCA did. So those are the things that I am and am passionate about and that I've given my time and energy to. Uh Tampa Hope, the or the the program over there that houses homeless people. That is somewhere where I've donated my time as well. I've I've donated feeding them lunch, just going around talking with them and understanding. What they're doing there and being an advocate of Tampa Hope. Uh amongst other things, I've done so many free workshops for people who are interested in down payment assistance and purchasing a home. I'm a City of Tampa certified agent who work with first time home buyers. So that is. The, it's just ingrained in me. I I've been on HOA boards, wherever I lived, I've always wanted to be involved and contribute to my community. So I'm not just talking about it. I have been about it and I am about it. And I think it goes back to what I was saying. You have to be, you can't think the community is gonna come to you. You have to be involved and seek it out as well.
Let me ask you this. I know she has two other questions that's brewing in her head. Juana, why now? What what motivated you to run for office now?
I, there is no, I is no eloquent reason, it's just that I go with my heart and my mind and it's it now is the time. And I think it's kind of a natural progression based on what I am passionate about, my experience. And just really wanting to have, yes, I can be involved in all of these things, but really being able to move the needle. Being on city council allows me to do that and affords me the opportunity to do that and represent. A community that I'm so desperately passionate about that I chose to live in. I chose to live in East Tampa. People ask me, why, why did you move to East Tampa? Because I wanted to invest in, I didn't wanna run away from something that some people said I should be scared of. And that is the reason that I I chose East Tampa. And that's why I think the time is now.
That's great.
But like, taking it a step further.
We're going a little deeper.
When did you know? Like, because I and and I feel it's one of those things where it's like, okay. Was it right, was it before she passed? Was it right after she passed? Was there something? And 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 what told you, do it?
Yeah, it, I will tell you that probably a year and a half ago I thought about it. But it was a fleeting thought. It wasn't anything that I truly sat down and focused on, like, okay, I'm gonna take this pathway. I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna start doing this. There was no plan. I thought about it and that's it. And then when unfortunately, when Ms. Henderson passed away, it's like, this must be the time. That's literally how it happened. And and I feel like it was just laid on my heart. I feel like I had the right people. Around me, I had the right experiences and I don't know if it's God, I I it just. I was, I was, it was pressed upon me in my mind and in my heart that now is the time.
Wow, I and I was curious cuz I think sometimes you never know, one, you never know the plan God has for you. Cause he he knows, we don't know, um for those who believe. If you don't, whatever. But I I I often think like, sometimes we will either will pray or we think about these things that we wanna do in our lives. And you never know when the time is going to come for you to do it. And sometimes God moves certain things around and and and. And then there's an opportunity. And you never know when that opportunity is gonna come, but you always gotta be ready. And so I was I was curious.
And have the faith.
I was curious on like, had you had that thought before? Was it something or was it just kind of like, I think I wanna do this? But wow, you had thought about this a little while ago.
A while ago, it did. And it's funny you say, you're saying certain things because when I told people. I'm running for city council, they're like, Juana, why? Why do you wanna do that? Like, they made it like such a negative and it shouldn't be a negative. We shouldn't, we shouldn't have a negative connotation with wanting to represent our community. And whoever wins, wins. Let everyone run their way race. It doesn't have to be negative. It doesn't have to be talking bad about one another. It doesn't have to be spewing lies about people just because you want someone else to win. We should all celebrate that we all want to represent our community. And I think we should just be fair in that aspect and appreciative of that aspect. And I think that's what I'm gonna say on that.
You said that you you had thought about it over a year ago. So of course, the sudden passing of of our lovely sister Gwen and. I mean, all of a sudden, it came available immediately. It's not like we knew her time was gonna be up or that seat's gonna be open. You know, in the end of the year or whatever. I mean, this was something that happened suddenly and unexpectedly. At what point did it just, this is it, I'm doing this? And you also said, you just said, mentioned that you you heard a lot of people say, why? Why are you doing this? Was there ever any moments in your mind that you kinda doubted like, yeah, why am I doing this? You know?
Never doubted it. I I typically, once I make a decision, it doesn't, I stick to it. It doesn't matter who says what, no matter. And that's what you ever heard the saying, you you don't share people what you're doing because they're they're, it's not their business. You don't, you don't need their approval. It's what you decide, what God decided for you. You don't have to share. Your information or your thoughts or your goals with other people because a lot of times they that can take you off your track. That they can talk you out of your blessing. They can talk you out of doing what you should be doing. And 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 that's how I look at it. So once I made the decision, it didn't matter what anyone said. They could, they could have said, Juana, you. You gonna have gray hair or you gonna be twenty pounds lighter. Well, I like this, if I could lose weight. Whatever they said, it whatever people say, it doesn't, it didn't matter. I I knew within me that that's what I want to do and I'm. I'm I'm going to do it.
As we wrap up, um for folks who may just be tuning in or may just be listening right now. What do you want their takeaway to be? Who will the city of Tampa be getting if they elect Juana Colbert to city council?
Right. So I came up with this cuz you know, I do a lot of studying, my 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 blow and my little acronyms. I have to come, because we have a short attention span. So I could sit up here and say a lot of things about me. But I came up with the three Cs to explain who I am. I'm committed. I'm committed to doing the right thing. I'm committed to our community. And that is the the first C. The next C is credentialed. I have, and when I say credentialed, it's not like I have a doctorate or I have, what I'm saying credential in terms of my experience. We're working with public private partnerships, with budgets, with economic development, with affordable housing. Credentialed, that's the second uh C. The third C is consensus. We talked about that. You have to build consensus and have relationships and have positive relationships. With the other council members in order to get things done. So that's my final C, consensus. So those are the three Cs and that's what you would be getting with Juana Colbert as your councilperson.
And I got one quick question. Um if I don't live in District Five, how can I still support Juana Colbert?
Yes, so if you don't live in District Five, you can support by sharing with people that you may know that live in District Five. The ultimate goal is to get the number of votes. We didn't talk about that. We we ought to talk about the number of people that vote real quick. It is bad. So you can support by donating as well if you believe in me and and wanna support my campaign. It takes money to run a campaign. And uh my website is juanaforcouncil.com. And on my social media, I have a link in there if you wanna donate, but.
Or F O R?
F O R. Juana, F O R, Council is my website. And then on my social media things and my bio is linked to donate or really, you can also check if you're registered to vote on my on my link tree. What is District Five? So there's a lot of information on there. And if you volunteer.
Cuz what about the voting?
Yes, so let's go. So there's over forty, a little over forty-four thousand people registered to vote in District Five. Last election, when Gwen Henderson was elected in twenty twenty-three, approximately five thousand people showed up to vote. That is not good. You're leaving your community in representation to. Such a small number of people in the community. So if anything, I would just encourage people to vote. I would prefer that you vote for me, but the bottom line is we need more people voting. That is what we need to push.
Cuz it beat a forty thousand. And got everything to say. But didn't vote.
Didn't vote. Early voting is September fourth through seventh. That is also when I prefer people to vote. Because Election Day is September ninth. We don't know what can happen on Election Day. You could get sick, your car may not work, you may not have a babysitter, you may. It may rain, it may, a number of things may hinder you from voting on September ninth. But you can vote September fourth through seventh and your vote will be counted.
September fourth through the seventh. Also, I I I'm gonna state this, it should be the obvious, you have to live in the city of Tampa to vote for this election.
District Five.
District and even. In District Five, in the city of Tampa, in order to vote in this election.
But you could be anywhere to support.
Correct. So please do that, juanaforcouncil.com. All right, we appreciate you.
I wanna stay longer.
But yes, we do have to get off air. We really do appreciate you. Praying for you and and wishing you all of the best, um even just particularly for the city of Tampa. Because I firmly believe that District Five seat is a very, very important seat. On our council. So I one commend all ten of y'all. I I commend all of y'all because it takes a lot to to be in the position that you are in to say I'm going to run. For for a city seat. Congratulations.
Thank you both.
All right. Well, thanks for hanging with us. Thanks for um all of your comments. By the way, before we go, I do wanna share, we've had several people. Danielle said, hi Juana, so proud to support you. Um we have, I think, Dia or Deja saying, we love Juana. We have John and William who were rude, so um I almost said something. Um Maria saying, good morning. So uh we also have um some other folks who chimed in saying that this is a very important conversation. Continue to educate others. That's the key to change. Brian said, thank you for advocating for affordable housing. That's very important. So we appreciate everybody who tuned in live and gave their comments nice or.
Regardless, if you love us or hate us, we thank you because it builds our algorithm. But just make sure you do what? Like, subscribe, follow.
We are live every Thursday, y'all. At nine thirty in the morning, we continue with our candidate conversations. Next week, I'm not gonna tell you who we have because honestly, I forgot. So we do have another candidate who will be joining us in studio next Thursday. Sharing their platform and their plan for the city of Tampa if they are elected. You can follow us, um like, subscribe on YouTube, Spotify and Apple Podcasts.
Do thing, do this for us. Stay rooted.